Good evening. Today is May 8, 2024. This is the evening of our monthly meeting. Oops, we're not on camera. We're over here at the table. Oh, that was. There we go. We will return to Zoom shortly. Right now, we have some executive session business, and then we'll return to public session. So I will make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of an individual and to discuss threatened litigation. All in favor? Hi. Okay, so we're gonna turn off the recording. Good evening, everyone who's joining us online and in the room. This is the May 2024 monthly meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. We have, oh. Everybody's in, yeah? Okay, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 2024 monthly meeting of the Village Board. Thank you for being patient while we held an executive session to discuss employment history of an individual and to discuss litigation. And I made the motion to exit executive session, a lie seconded, and we all voted in favor to come out of the executive session. So now we'll move into the monthly portion of our meeting, which is, again, when we hear from our departments and boards and our municipal partners, mayors, I'm sorry, that trustees gave their reports. And we have a business, some business to do at the end. I want to start, though, this is probably tough for me. The Phillips Town and Helane communities lost two parents on Monday. It has been a shocking and painful time. Cory Kates came to Phillips Town during the pandemic. He wasted no time in becoming deeply engaged with our community via athletics, the hub, and his beloved parish at St. Phillips. In just that short time, Cory became widely known and widely loved. Stephanie Doucette was a mainstay of village life and essential to the invigoration of our Main Street. She made everyone on Main Street and everywhere else look and feel fabulous. She was generous apart, as well as with her talents and her resources, volunteering for and supporting the Helane Foundation, Helane Arts, the hub, really any organization that asked for her and needed her. And she always said yes. And yet somehow, she never felt she did enough. She joined the Cold Spring Fire Company in May 2023, and by June, became an administrative officer as a secretary. Of course, she did. She was a bridge builder and a connector of ideas, of energy, of friendships, and souls, and she will be deeply missed by her village. So I'd like to begin our meeting with a moment of silence in honor of Cory and Stephanie, and as a gesture of our love and comfort to their spouses and children. Okay, thank you for that. It's yard waste this week. No Village Board meeting next week. Four of us are going to be at the NICO conference, but we'll reconvene on the 22nd, and we'll talk a bit about what that agenda looks like as we go forward. First item is, well, we need a roll call from clerk. Sorry, I skipped that bit.
Let's see, Bosie.
Here.
Let's see, Fremer.
Here.
Let's see, Starbuck. Here. Rusty Woods. Here. Mayor Solis. Here. Thank you. Sorry, I skipped that.
Opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items, any requests? We did announcements, and now we'll turn to Village Departments. Do we have Michelle with us?
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
What's up?
Quick little notes to go over. ARPA reporting for villages was due on April 30th for any updates through March 31st. I submitted that and followed the same guidelines we've been doing. The village has earmarked a project for the filters, but no contracts have been signed, so technically, we can't say that they've been obligated. So we have to obligate projects by December 31st of this year. We knew that the bids are in process. We're working through some last steps on that. And then, once the bids come in, we could do the contracts, and then the next ARPA reporting for the village itself isn't due until next April. But it did say we are okay with saying that nothing's obligated, so long as we meet that December deadline.
So Michelle, can I hop in here?
Yep.
This is gonna be part of my report, but since you've raised it, I have a meeting with Will, our engineer, with the counties, with John Tully from the county and their urban engineer, to go over where we are, so that we can get it. We need to have an IMA in place with the county before we bid. So that will, that will begin on Thursday, and once we have that in place, we can roll forward with all the things Michelle is talking about. So it's moving forward. Go ahead.
Okay, the next routine order is the village ban. We pay a ban off every May, and we renew it the next day. That went through, no problem. So the new outstanding ban amount is $2,071,050. And that's for water and sewer projects that have been completed, and we're just paying down the debt now. Every quarter, apparel tax forms are due. Those have been filed. I've been working on setting up the parking program, enforcement tools, all the backend stuff, trying to make all the systems connect. It hasn't been easy, to say the least, but I'm working through it as best as I can with the help of a huge team. Trusty Starbuck, Trusty Fredmark's hopped in, working with the court clerk. You know, Kelly, Jeff, everybody, we're all hands on deck, and I just wanted to update the board that, you know, as much as you guys are moving on the public front, we are moving so much behind the scenes, too. And we are, we are all doing our best to make this work easily for everybody. Last reminder is that the fiscal year ends on May 31st, the end of this month, for any departments or orders. We just need to make sure that all bills are, I'm sorry, all goods and services are delivered and rendered by May 31st. The invoices can come in June. Same thing we go through every year. So if there's anything outstanding that was budgeted for that we may have not ordered, now's the time to do it. I'll go over that in department heads as well. And to go along with that is year-to-date general fund statements. Right now, we're about balanced. I still think we're gonna end the year right on the balance, where revenues and expenditures will be even. A little bit different than years past, where there's some surplus. But we've been talking about this all year, that where revenues and expenditures are pretty close together. So I don't have any major concerns to report there.
Thank you very much. So much appreciated. And Michelle, thank you for grabbing the bull by the horns and getting us through, all of us, through parking.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next is roadways and facilities. I think that I see Bugsy. Do I? Let us say Robert. Okay, so let's see, I can pull up a few things. This is, you know, it's spring, when the first paragraph is, we pumped floodwaters on Cedar Street, and we treated sidewalks with calcium chloride for snow. The team has done a lot of pothole filling, which people should be feeling a difference in passing streets. Lot of cleanup at our parks, including McConville Park and Dockside, and I just wanted to acknowledge Bugsy volunteered and came in on his own time on Saturday to help that the Riverkeeper clean up on Saturday. So very much appreciated. And also, many of the, he worked with Garrison Tree to address limbs at Mayor's, excuse me, McConville Park, where the tots park is, limbs that he was concerned about. Lots of general maintenance. The, and what Bugsy has prolonged the life of the Irish stairs for quite a long time, the steps that run from Main Street up to Parrot Street. When they were replaced, probably 20 years ago, with thinner gauge, iron was used than, than should have been, so they worn down quickly and have sort of all gone in quick succession. How many, is Jeff here? How many, how many treads did you do this time? It's like four, right? Whole bunch.
Yeah.
Whole bunch of tread. But they've been replaced with a thicker gauge that was intended to be used, and we send thanks to the Phillips Town Highway Department for assisting with welding on that. And Bugsy, of course, and his team have been continuing to keep up with signage, and we thank them for all the additional work on that.
You know, they got this parking site of planes up in time for the first of the month.
Pretty rough. Water and wastewater. I don't see Matt. I just, Matt's, Matt's report, all of these reports are available online. It's, it's a lot of data and measuring, but I think what's important to talk about tonight with water and wastewater is that Laura and I have been working with the engineers related to the dam. We now have the appropriate documentation we need for approaches, multiple different approaches and easement requirements, and can now sit down with those property owners again and revisit the access question. And it's important because we are on a timeline with the DEP for the period of time in which we need to be charged less for water when we drain down the stamp. So we want very much to get this done within that DEP with time limitation. Code enforcement, things are picking up in the spring. I wanted to say that Greg, Greg Warner, who's our code enforcement officer in cooperation with Phillips Town, he has been working very hard with the boat club to ensure that they can safely access their docks while they undertake repair. I expect that their engineers have now delivered new drawings to Greg. They will go to our engineers, and we'll be able to have them in front of us again to talk about the actual bulkhead repair. But for now, Greg is making sure that the access they are using is safe. And we have Officer in Charge Jackson here to give his very first monthly report, which is very exciting.
Month of April, the police department answered a total of 123 calls per service. We conducted 51 traffic stops. Thirty-one of those traffic stops resulted in citations, and we had one arrest resulting from one of those traffic stops.
Very exciting. Fantastic. Any questions for the OIC?
Did you give a parking ticket number?
I did not. I do not have a parking ticket.
We have parking tickets via the courts report, so.
I want to say, Officer Jackson, we do appreciate the detailed summary, the details that's in the report. So you have a lot of data on each incident, and I think that's a good practice. Thank you. Please continue.
And thank you, too, for sorting out how we could properly protect privacy and make these reports public. Appreciate that.
With the newer CAD system, we're able to do a lot more.
Yeah.
We're able to get a lot of, a lot more data than we have previously, and we're able to select which data. And we present it all, but what you guys are able to see and what we're practicing means.
That's great. Thank you. And I know that you are also working very closely with Michelle and making, making sure that our enforcement side lines up with.
Yes. Trying very hard to come up with some sort of plan to make the parking enforcement officers' job a little bit easier, and in order, so that way, we have a a better transition into being able to use the new system, once we're able to work out all the little tweaks that we have right now. On our end. It's on our.
Keller, we're sending the camera to you.
Not moving.
Not moving. Our camera's not moving. Matt is here, Matt is here in the audience with us. We do have another item under police, and that one is the retirement of Officer Comiskey. A lot of people probably have never seen Terry, because he works the overnight on weekends, and has for years and years, but he is real, and he's been with the village of Cold Spring for 24 years. And he writes that after 24 years of dedicated service to the department and the community, it is with mixed emotions I submit my resignation. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the entire village board for their support and guidance throughout my tenure. I will always cherish the memories and experiences I have gained during my time at the village of Cold Spring Police Department. While I'm sad to be leaving, I'm excited for the new opportunities that lie ahead, and I wanted to be able to tell you about that, but he wanted an Irish goodbye, so salute Terry. Thank you for everything. You have been an integral part of the department, and you're leaving big shoes to fill. And I expect that soon we'll be having some recommendations for interviews from the officer in charge. Okay, anything else?
That's it. I'm conducting some interviews, looking for possible candidates for the police department, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Phillips is here for the fire company.
We did a total of 13 calls last month, a couple car accidents. We just started receiving all of our, we received a grant at the beginning of the year, and we put in for water rescue equipment, which will be used in, like, storm response and normal, like, river, pond, lake, whatever. So we started getting that, and we're hoping to start training next week.
Fantastic. And that, is that right? That includes both, you can do water rescue.
It's a total of eight dry suits, a bunch of helmets, life jackets, an inflatable boat, everything that's, we should need. Hopefully, we don't need more.
Who's the grantor?
He wanted to remain anonymous.
The private donation. Private donation. The same, the same donor who retrieved, gave the trees to help, to help the tree board. And we are immensely grateful to you for your support of our fire company. It is a great relief to me to know that you have that, because watching you guys go in water more and more is scary. Thank you so much. And you have a reminder about grills, right?
Just one more.
Oh, yes.
We've noticed over the last couple of years, but really this year, people redoing their addresses on their house. They're, you know, if they redo their house, they're changing the colors.
Oh, oh.
They might look good, but if it's hard for us to see from the street at 2:00 in the morning, just keep that in mind when you're picking your numbers.
So make sure that numbers are highly visible, that your address numbers are highly visible.
Like orange, but just like your normal numbers, or at least something on the mailbox.
Or something.
Because that goes for all of us, us, these guys.
delivery.
It's hard to see at 2:00 in the morning, and that's not helping.
So please, our help, our first responders, help you by keeping your house numbers visible, potentially lit. But, but visible at least. Thank you very much. Okay? Thank you. Next is justice court. So let's see. When I was reading this earlier, there were, there's not a, is there a total number of tickets? There is the total, there is total income from tickets over the month, but I don't see total number of tickets. But that's something we can, we can tease out with you right now. But the court had 31 defendants, 31 charges, total income of $9,218. That is all court fees, not just. Okay, reports from our standing boards. Do we have anyone from HGRB? Nope. Just say that the HGRB is, it's got activity all around the district, and two greenhouses in the district, which I think is really fun, and that's something you see very often. They are working steadily and well. Our planning board's primarily focused on 133 to 135 Main Street. They're working very well and cooperatively with the zoning board, as each board has purview over portions of the application for 133 to 135 Main Street. The zoning board, I'm actually gonna take the time to read this paragraph, because I think the zoning boards report this month really reflects our new zoning code at work, and, and the flexibility it brings to the redevelopment of our, of Main Street and other neighborhood properties. So this is from Eric Worth, who's the chair of the zoning board. The ZBA held two meetings last month. They included a public hearing on the renovation of 133 to 135 Main Street. A key purpose of this renovation is to increase the number of units in the building from one residential and one commercial to two residential and two commercial. The change calls for four off-street parking spaces under chapter 13417M, but the lot has only room for two. The ZBA granted a variance, allowing the shortfall on the grounds that, one, the gain of residential and commercial units benefits the community; two, the lot has a long driveway that is likely to serve as a quasi-third space. The driveway is needed for access to the two spaces, but it can be used for short-term parking, such as during deliveries to the commercial tenants. Three, the residential tenants will be eligible for permits to park in the residence-only district. And four, the absence of a full-size parking lot is in keeping with the community character of the poor business district, which poor business property. So that sort of wraps into a neat bow a lot of the goals that we were trying to achieve with updating our zoning code, and I'm really pleased to see it in action. Thank you, Eric, and going for that. Tree board, few quick things. The Grand Tree contest has been launched. Nominations are due by May 31st. Inspiration was taken from Mike Turton of the Highlands Current, who wrote about fantastic trees, unusual trees in the village, and the tree board took that up and asked people to nominate notable trees around the village, be it the oldest, the largest, the most persevering, most memorable, or most quirky tree in the village. We want to make note and showcase the historical, cultural, and ecological significance of these wonderful community treasures. So you can go to, to, they have their own website, coldspringtree.webly.com backslash grandtree.html, and make your nomination. And they also expressed thanks to Bugsy and his crew for, for working with, as I mentioned earlier, the tree trimming at McConville Park. Rep mission, we have our events. Well, before we get to Community Day, there is a request from the Recreation Commission, which I think is a reasonable request, but I think we need some policy around it. They've asked to establish their own social media pages, so that they are, they can advertise their events and activities in the parks, et cetera, which I think is great, not having them reliant on office staff and office staff not having to do that. But I think we need to have some, some, yeah, some guidelines for overall social media policy. And I wondered if anyone wanted to take ownership of drafting something for the board to look at.
Who's youngest?
That have policies that you can work from. We just need a draft.
Is it a, is it housed on R on the village website, or it be a separate?
They're asking for, they're asking for, they're a Facebook and an Instagram page. And we need, we need those policies generally anyway. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, right now, we're trying to get community, we're trying to vamp up Community Day and trying to get donations for Community Day and get the word out that we're looking for people to participate, be it either down at the waterfront or in the parade or something like that. And I can only send, I can only send out so many emails.
Yeah. So you're taking, are you saying yes?
Oh, yeah.
Right on. Thank you, Governor Mayor. I actually have a file in my office of ones I was looking at before, so I can hand that off to you. Please, event coordinator Lillian, talk to us about Community Day, July 6th. Very exciting. And thank you to all of the volunteers who are pulling it together.
We are on a roll. We have received approximately $17,000 in donations so far, which would cover fireworks. What I'm here tonight for is to get an okay from you guys for our parade route. We're looking to do a parade at around 4:30 in the afternoon, so like, kick things off down at the waterfront. We tried our best to make the parade route as long as possible within the village, without tying up 90 for too long. So we have permission from Helane to use their parking lots and their roads that day. We just need to get them the necessary paperwork. So as soon as I get an approval for this tonight, hopefully, somebody in the village office will take care of that paperwork.
Steel stage on?
We're gonna stage on Upper Craig Side Drive.
Yeah.
If we need to, we'll push up into the parking lot behind the high school. Okay, we're gonna come out of Upper Craig Side Drive and make the left on Mountain Avenue, just like we would be marching Memorial Day, where you go up Mountain Avenue instead of going down Mountain Avenue, then make the right onto Cedar Street. At that point, we would pick up any veterans that are participating in the parade and classic cars that we're looking at getting. Come out onto Main Street, make the right onto Main Street, and come straight down and make our way to the waterfront.
So this is really, it's very similar to previous routes, but a vast improvement. It used to stage on Cedar Street, so staging it at Helane. If they're willing to do that, that would be fantastic. Where does, where does Pevac?
Pevac will either have one of two things. Pevac is usually the last thing in the parade. The other thing that I spoke to former officer in charge Burke with is about possibly staging them either on Locust Ridge or on Orchard Street, like, at, like, the Methodist Church.
Yeah.
So that if they have a call prior to the parade start, or, and they need to get out, they can get out and go before we start off. And then if they're in the back of the parade, they just jut out. Yeah.
That's, that's a concern that I have. OIC, do you share that concern and think pursuing another spot for them is good?
Yeah, other than the, other than the ambulance cord building?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. I mean, that's the same thing that happens with all, like, if there's a fire call during the middle of the parade, whatever fire company needs to.
Is at the end.
That's why they're all in the back.
I'm just concerned about that part when, when you're crossing Cedar and that.
Yeah, no. Yep.
Okay. Questions from board members? I think it's great. Great job. And it's so smart to move it till later in the day when it's cooler, and then have the festivities go on in the evening when it's cooler. Love it.
Soon as we get down to the waterfront, that's when the other things will be taking place down there. We'll have the pie baking contest that's still going on. We're gonna have a dump tank. There's a possibility of a grease pole.
What?
Yeah. I talked to somebody. Possibility. Don't have a confirmation of it yet.
You can't say stuff out loud unless you mean it. Same like that.
Possibility. We have food trucks coming down. So it looks like it's going to be a really fun day and evening for the entire community. And we hope that the entire community will come out and support. All the organizations that are down there are nonprofits. So come down and help support them, support their causes, to, you know, get things moving.
Superb. If anybody has any questions or any concerns, they can email me at eventscoltspring@gmail.com. Excellent. And I think we probably need a vote to approve the parade route, so Lillian can proceed. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the parade route for Community Day's parade, as presented by Lillian.
Okay. All in favor? Hi. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
For the input, OIC. Okay. Updates from municipal partners. I don't think we have any of our municipal partners with us tonight, but just to say thank you to the town of Phillips Town for contributing $500 for Community Day, as they, as they do every year. And then our reports. I've been talking and talking, so I'd love for someone else to give a report. Laura, you have?
I have, most of my items will come on their board business, but I have one update. Just good news that our food scrap drop-off site is moving along, so this is funded through one of our concerted grants. We identified a location, so it will be on Kembo at the end of the winter parking. And there, any Phillips Town resident can drop off food scraps on Tuesdays, or can continue to go to Langate on Saturdays. So we'll be part of the Phillips Town program. We hope to start it at the beginning of June. And I will be working on materials to get an email blast out and material on our website. So more to come, but I think it's another nice benefit of our grant funding.
And thank you for working with the staff on a location.
Yeah, I think it, I think it'll work out.
Sorry, I sowed up for a second. When, when does it start?
The goal is first week of June. Yep, if we can get all the supplies in order.
Yep.
All right.
Anyone else?
So with the passing of Stephanie Doucette this week, there have been a lot of people out front of her store, store, kind of putting flowers and things like that, and the, well, Melia Marzolo came to me and said, we really want to do a memorial bench. So she volunteered to, to raise funds to cover the cost of one, and would like to add one. I spoke with the mayor about it, and the idea of doing one with, you know, up in, by, in front of Joseph's Jewelry Shop, there's one bench with, like, jewelry embedded into the side of the concrete. Bugsy makes all of the benches on Main Street. He has a mold. He like pours the concrete. Bugsy makes all of the benches on Main Street. He has a mold. He like pours the concrete, cuts the plane, the, the wood and paints it. And they wanted to, you know, add a memorial plaque for Stephanie. But the mayor had suggested maybe getting like special items from her family to put into the concrete. So I spoke with Bugsy. He said it was something that they could do. There's actually room for two benches there, you know, if, if we were ambitious about it. But request was for one memorial bench in that area. So I just wanted to bring that to the board and see if that was something that we would consider accepting a donation for.
I think it's lovely. It's also the tots park also Bugsy put toys in the, in the bench ends at the top part. It's really, really sweet. As long as Bugsy okay's shoveling, you know, what the area he needs to work around. I think it's fantastic and lovely and, but make, I want to make sure they know that it's not gonna happen immediately.
That's been expressed. It takes time and Bugsy has things to do in his, you know, work schedule.
But that could then kind of collect what the items they want to use.
That's right. That's right. So, but Bugsy was enthusiastic about, you know, supporting the effort and understands how important memorials are to this village, so. Do I need to make a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the fund donation request for a memorial bench for Stephanie Dussette in front of her store.
Second. On favor? Wait, in front of her store or above the block?
Right next, I mean, there's, yeah, in, within, you know, the block. Yeah. And then the other piece besides, I think something further down the, in our board business, we have something about parking to discuss, but I just want to acknowledge the letter that the board received from the merchants regarding parking. And there are a couple sort of highlights that I want to point out there. I'm, I'm really grateful to the merchants for communicating in such a respectful manner, for organizing themselves. It's been a while since we had merchants on Main Street that were organized. They've been a little bit sort of out, not participatory and this is a major effort. There were forty one different business owners or court co-owners that signed a letter, fifteen of which are residents. Twenty one of which the businesses listed were chamber members. So that's, you know, to me, like a sign that the merchants are, are getting more involved and I really am happy to see that. Their, their letter, you know, the highlight that I pulled out was a healthy Main Street is key to a thriving community. Promotes economic prosperity for merchants and residents alike and reduces the ecological impact of commerce. We feel lucky to live and work in a close knit community that understands that a healthy, sustainable and equitable local economy is vital to preserving our unique character and our natural environment. And I, you know, they've asked for a, a number of specific things that they would like us to reconsider and.
So we've scheduled for June fifth. Because I would like it to be a, a single topic session. And I'd like us all to have time to review what was sent to us and for us to look at our data too, so that we can have an exchange with what we know as well. So Wednesday, our first meeting in June is, first meeting in June is the fifth. So thank you.
Right. So we will have the meeting and at that time, you know, that'll give us time to review everything and to find answers or, or look into the possibilities or the questions they've asked. They've provided a report, they've provided, provided some stat survey data.
Yeah, it's in the newspaper.
That's right. It can be seen in the Highlands Current online, so.
Follow up with that on the fifth. We'll have a whole session on the fifth.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, Kathleen, do we think that, that meeting on the fifth, which, you know, I think is a really good idea. Do we see this more as like focusing on the merchants and that letter or a broader discussion of parking?
I think, I think my, my initial feeling is that we focus on the particular issues raised here as a focus. There are elements of, they refer to residential parking, et cetera, but I think that this is a needy, this is a needy conversation. And I'd like that to be the basis of that conversation.
Right. Okay, that sounds good. And of course, with the, with the recognition that the parking plan was in development over a very long period of time with a lot of public comment. Right? And so maybe just reminding everybody, changes have to happen through a process. If there are any changes to be made at all, right? So.
We're certain, we are open to hearing concerns. And we will assess, as we said we would, and we'll see where we go from there. We need to have the conversation first. I don't think anybody has had time to review in detail. I know I have not because I've been working on other things. I have scheduled a session for this on the fifth and we'll take it up then.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have an item. Hi, everyone. Apologies, I can't be there. I have to be outside Boston for work this week. But I do have a letter to be read into the record. This was, this was something that trustee Starbuck and I worked on and signed our names to. It's very much worth noting that this letter just represents the views of the two of us. I think it's really important that we have a lot of diverse opinions and, and it's really important that not everybody needs to have an opinion. I mean, it's or say what their opinion is. So this is a, a letter that we have sent to Linda Cooper and Megan Fitzgerald from New York State Parks. And I'll read that to you now. Eliza, do you have anything else to add to this as introduction or?
Nope, no, I think the letter says it all.
Okay, great. So, dear Linda and Megan, we are two members of the Board of Trustees in the Village of Cold Spring, elected to represent villagers. We endorse the idea of a multi-use accessible trail that begins at Dockside Park, runs along the shoreline and connects Cold Spring and Beacon. Our position does not reflect the views of every trustee and every villager, but we speak for a sizable group of constituents who have consistently expressed to us attitudes of collaboration, support and goodwill towards a fjord trail. Even though their voices have sometimes been drowned out in the contention over the issue. During a public discussion about the proposed fjord trail that the Cold Spring Board of Trustees held on May first, many villagers expressed support for the project. The planning process to date makes us confident that the fjord trail will provide crucial benefits to the residents of Cold Spring and the surrounding areas, expanded options for outdoor recreation, better visitor management and new modes of slow transportation. Bicyclists in Cold Spring, especially bike riding families, will have a flat, car-free, safe path for long rides. Anyone with restricted mobility who cannot handle a hiking trail, seniors, families with infants, people with wheelchairs will be able to ta- take a scenic excursion and live a fuller, healthier life. The village will have public bathrooms, trash receptacles and trash collection at Dockside Park, provided and managed by H H F T and N Y, and New York State Office of Parks. Ecologically minded villagers who do not drive will have a safe route out of town other than the train. None of these benefits will exist unless the fjord trail begins at Dockside. While bringing these benefits, however, the fjord trail will worsen transportation problems on Fair Street and Route ninety. The planners have not adequately addressed these problems. Even if the trail begins at Dockside, many users will approach it by walking out Fair Street. But Fair Street lacks a sidewalk north of the municipal parking lot. Route ninety would be a direct approach to the trail for a key set of users, class groups and individual students from Halve School. But that way also lacks a complete sidewalk. A throughway for commuters and trucks, Route ninety is hazardous to pedestrians. The crosswalks, except for the one at Main Street, have no traffic lights and are dangerous to use against the thirty or forty mile per hour traffic, especially for Halve students and seniors from Chestnut Ridge and Butterfield residences who cross ninety frequently. To mitigate these problems, we asked the fjord trail planners to work with the State Department of Transportation and the village to extend sidewalks to Little Stony Point, improve crosswalk safety on ninety and reduce speed limits on ninety. We also ask you to reconsider the idea of adding new parking spaces north of the village, since increasing accommodations for vehicles would increase the traffic on ninety. Overall, we are grateful to New York State Office of Parks and the Fjord Trail Organization for giving our community a new park. Its presence will encourage residents and visitors alike to value the environment and lead healthier lives. We hope you will continue to engage in cooperative planning with the village residents and leaders to minimize harmful side effects. Sincerely, trustee Eliza Starbuck and Aaron Frymark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to board business. And we have a whole bunch of authorizations. First, our county Putnam County pays dues into the Hudson Valley Regional Council. They have asked for a letter of support from us to the, to a county executive firm and the county legislature, asking for them to renew their support. We have benefited immensely from the regional council via climate, climate smart communities. They've expanded our, our capacity and, and ability to access funds and knowledge that we wouldn't have had without them. So Laura, do you want to add anything to that in proposing this letter?
No, Phillips Town already approved a letter quite similar and we are hopeful that the Putnam County Legislature steps in appropriately to pay their dues for this important service.
So. All right, go ahead. Would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter in support for Hudson Valley Regional Council.
Six B, I'm gonna turn over directly to Laura.
Great. And so I am excited to bring to you a letter that would authorize our applications for two grants that we have, that we are already eligible for. We just need to submit what we're going to do with them. So this is through the nicer that clean energy communities program. We received a one hundred thousand dollar grant and a seventy five hundred dollar grant. And, you know, we've talked a lot about the, the, how we'll spend it, but I'll, I'll say again, between the two of them, what we plan to do is purchase and a Ford F one fifty Lightning truck for the water and wastewater department. So it's the Cold Springs first municipal vehicle. In order to charge that, we'll have two electric vehicle charging ports at the wastewater plant. And so it's covering the purchase installation. As part of the extensive renovation, or the renovations that are planned for Village Hall, we will convert to heat pumps. And we can only cover part of it through this grant, so it covers kind of the first half, half of it. And we expect to receive a hundred seventy five thousand dollar grant this summer that will cover the remainder plus other, other upgrades. And then a, a number of items of electric vehicle landscaping equipment for the roadways and facilities department. So once this, when the, if the board approves this, then by the end of the week, I plan to submit our application. To nicer that, and then just to say the process is long and very bureaucratic. They have to approve our application, then they will come back to us and we go through a contract process. So that's when we'll look at, we'll, you know, be collecting bids. But even we have to sign the contract first and then we would sign a bid. So, and then we could begin the work. So it all takes a little while. But we'll, we'll get used to this because we're gonna get a bunch of grants.
I trust that you have it under control.
Yep. And so I, unless there are any questions, I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to nicer to the clean energy communities for the one hundred thousand dollar grant and seventy five hundred dollar grant.
With enthusiasm.
Thank you. The next, we are contracted with Royal to start garbage, weekend garbage pickup in June. I think our numbers are picking up in May in a way that we need to start earlier. So we have, I'm proposing an addendum, a modification to our agreement with Royal to begin Saturday and Sunday pickup starting this weekend at a cost of two hundred and forty dollars and seventy six cents per weekend.
And it's for Main Street.
It's for Main Street and, and the waterfront. Yep, the waterfront meaning waterfront park, the dock and the brown stand. Any discussion? So I, I, let's see, I need someone to authorize me to sign.
We'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign and authorize the contract with Royal Carting to start Saturday service effectively five eleven twenty four.
Favor? Eliza, can you grab the next two and we will explain it better than I will, the expansion of T two services?
Yes. So there's two, our T two system is a system that manages our parking enforcement tools and connects them to our court department so that they can check on parking tickets that have, you know, gone too long. But there's a couple services that they offer that our court clerk felt was very helpful and that our treasurer also kind of concluded would save us time and money. One is sending letters to anybody who is a violator who didn't show up to, to court, did not pay their ticket on time. We send out notices. So you send, get a first notice, a second notice, a third notice. And so for the T two system to send those notices automatically, they pay for the envelope, the printing, the stamping and putting it in the mail and all the work involved. It's a dollar a piece. So our team has established that that would be really helpful. And we just need a authorization from the mayor to sign the quote for the.
There are two, right?
Two different ones. That's one. That's the automated delinquent notices.
Handle that one first.
Yeah.
Well, as a kind, but it, it has a total, but we don't know the total.
This is an estimate.
So it's, so we're kind of signing to a dollar per.
That's a dollar per year. We don't pay in advance or anything.
Thanks for clarifying. Do they charge, when do they charge at the end? The one.
That I would, I would have to check. I mean, I think for the billing cycle, we get, you know, charged for the fees as well. Yeah. But it's, it's only, we only get charged if the letters go out.
It has been well written by Michelle.
Yeah.
So someone want to make a motion?
So I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the quote for the T two systems automated letter delivery service.
Printed link when notices.
Yeah. The second one is a service that allows our courts to look up delinquent tickets that are out of state. So right now, we can only look up in state and our police department has been looking them up. So our court clerk will collect them and then hand them over to the police department and they'll have to look them up out of state for two dollars and fifty cents per look up, per successful look up. T twos will provide that service so that Kathy has instant answers and can look things up on demand.
And does that get swallowed in the, the fees related to the fine?
It does not currently because we would have to probably rewrite the code to add that additional fee in to that. So that would be something that we would have to swallow if we take this service on. And it's not for every, it's not for every ticket. It's for only for out of state.
Right. It's not a, it's not a small number, so it would, it would be helpful. I'm just trying to understand and I'm sorry that I didn't ask this question to Michelle earlier today. How, how that is? How that is, what the pace, the fee structure of that is. I'm, I'm, I am comfortable with it in concept. I just don't understand how the, the actual billing works.
Right. I mean, I think it would be billed in the same way that our, our other fees through their services are billed, whether it's quarterly or monthly. But yeah, we would basically just be paying for the service that we don't currently have.
I'm, I'm comfortable, I am myself comfortable with proceeding with this because I think it's useful. And it saves our officers sitting at the desk looking up licenses when they should be on the street. But I do want to get clarity from Michelle on that, but I, I am willing to, I'm willing to support it tonight.
Well, if we have questions about it, maybe we shouldn't. Well, if we have questions about it, maybe we shouldn't support it tonight. I'm also, I I. I agree. It's it was a weird format, right? I mean, it's it's like it's it's a set number and it looks like. We're going to be billed that even though we've been told we're not, we're going to be billed by the actual usage.
Well, why don't we? Why don't we? I mean, I'm I'm saying I support it in concept. I think you're right that there are elements that need to be. Flushed out. So we're sure what we're voting on. I'm comfortable tabling it. This is not, we're not in a rush to do this. We can, we've been doing it so far. We can do it for another week, for two weeks while we. Until we're in session again.
When you talk with, if if we table, so you talk with Michelle, it'd be helpful to know, yeah, the scale of it and. Supposed to be the same for the other one. And you know, our budget is incredibly tight as we know that this. Do you have a sense of, or maybe you already have a sense of that, Eliza, like?
Well.
It doesn't add up to the scale that it would have a budget concern?
It it's in the pursuit of tickets that aren't paid. So if it allows us to.
Collect.
Collect those tickets that we wouldn't otherwise, because they're out of state. People.
Yeah.
Then the $2.50 is money that we will use, but not lose.
And and then we also, we also authorize something already that's for collections. Right?
Right.
I think, and without looking at the code right now, I don't know the answer, but I I think that the way it's structured in the code, it's fines and fees. That's what I want to confirm.
So I I would be willing to support it today if contingent on us. Finding that there's no minimum.
Why don't we just table it?
No minimum.
There is no minimum fee. That that is, there is no minimum. If it never gets used, which is unlikely because it gets used regularly. But there is no minimum fee. We don't have to pay a monthly fee. There's nothing. It's literally only used. It's only paid when it's used. And and only successfully when they give us the answer.
Right. Okay, great. Then then it has my support. So but if you have reservations, I.
I I would like to table it. I do. How do others? Okay. So I make a motion to table until we get some more information from Michelle. In a second. Second, all in favor? Hi, I need a post. Thank you for that. Thank you, Eliza. Okay, next sort of. Oh, I didn't give a report. That's okay, because what I'm going to tell you is going to lead into my report. So Fair Street, we have emergency repairs at sixty-two Fair Street. That's the last property on the upslope side before Mayor's Park. There is an easement there for. Wastewater and water lines. That there is a culvert in the wooded area of that sloped area that is, we have an easement for. It is collapsed. It is part of the planned repair of Fair Street. What's happening, we're in the process of engineering and we're going to hear a report on the overall project. On the twenty-second, when we're back in session. But this, a portion of the easement goes over. A private driveway. It's a very steep driveway. It's an older couple and right now they cannot access their driveway. So. We had the engineers on site on. Monday. They laid out a plan. There is a letter from them identifying this as. Requires immediate action to prevent for the damage and allow for the owners to safely access their property. They are available for oversight and they suggested that we get bids. We saw three bids. The only numbers that we got were from Lisicatos. And what I have for in front of you tonight for approval is to proceed based on the engineer's recommendation. And the bid from Lisicatos with Lisicatos, they can be on site tomorrow to what they will do is cut back the driveway. On on either side of where it has collapsed. Restore whatever needs to be restored underneath, whether that's the new pipe or rebuilding with stone. And then fill it with. Item four with large gravel. And that will be a stabilization until the larger work comes to us. Later in the year. Any questions?
Yeah. It's not clear to me. Did I receive a copy of that?
It should have been in your packet.
My. It's the electronic packet? Are we sure?
It's an estimate.
Wait, I don't know if we got the cost estimate.
Okay, it was sent to Jeff. I don't know if it was, should have been distributed to you. It is an estimate for that work that I just described, six thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine fifty-four.
It's fine now.
I think it's on the page before. I missed it because it's the page before the Han memo.
Correct. It's the page before the Han memo. Do you have it, Aaron?
It's the page before what memo? Sorry.
The Han memo, the engineering memo, and the name at the top should be Lisicatos.
It's not in the packet that I received today, so I'll abstain from a vote.
Okay. Would you like? Would you like me to? It's seven short items. Would you like me to read it?
Um, I. I'm sure that would be helpful. I still haven't had time to digest anything.
Emergency repair sixty-two Fair Street.
Yep.
McAdam full width, plus or minus four inches. Remove McAdam and dispose of in a legal manner. Remove McAdam and rocks from hole as needed. Supply and install crushed item number four to cover exterior of existing CMP pipe. Excavate through hollowed out section to backfill and compact properly. Supply and install crushed item four to top of existing McAdam trench backfill to be in eight to twelve inch lifts and wet tamped. After it settles, then they would go back and do. Asphalt over top of that.
Just a quick question. You said at the number one, cut McAdam full width, is it four inches or four feet?
I'm sorry, four feet. So other, what other other questions? Am I? If I lack clarity, this is the private property and they can't, they can't get up their driveway.
We have to.
It's we have an, it is private property over which we have an easement. The damages and the easement related to the damage that is on the slope. The larger issue will be addressed as part of the engineered plans. Which Han is coming in to discuss with us on the twenty-second so that we can proceed with permitting and bidding. So I need a motion to.
Make a motion to approve the quote for emergency repairs at sixty-two Fair Street. For the mayor to sign.
Second, all in favor? Okay, the second item that Bugsy put forward and asked for approval. Is. He's he's working with the county and his team and trying to sort out what we can do until the larger. Repair work is ready to be done to redirect water away from that driveway. One of his proposals is. It's a corrugated pipe that's flexible. To to direct it from where the pipe has failed. Down in down to Fair Street more directly rather than at a diagonal. He is. He has asked us to approve the amount of four thousand one hundred and eight forty, recognizing that we are. Close to the budget year. And we'll have more flexibility in June. He's looking at alternatives. In term, including sandbagging, et cetera, and breaking up some of the rock that's there. He would like approval so that if he needs to go to this measure before June one, he can proceed. It would be if we were over, it would end up. That Michelle, we would take it from fund balance if we need it. I am encouraging him to to do what he can to find. Alternatives that that buy us some time.
If this is above ground?
Yeah, so if you are standing in front of Mayor's Park and sixty-two Fair Street, the house is here. And then there's a, there's, there's empty space. There's a wooded area. Before the next house, it's in that wooded area.
That's deep slope?
That's deep slope. There is an easement on that steep slope that allowed wa- waistlines and water lines. When the sewer plant was extended from sixty-eight to seventy, that was the connection down from the Undercliffe neighborhood to the sewer treatment plant.
How temporary? Like how how does this relate to the longer term? I mean, I guess I'm just wondering.
That's my concern as well is do we, are we going to spend that we're going to, are we going to spend money that we're going to end up pulling up? Which is why I asked him, when we got these numbers, I asked him to look at alternatives and see if we can stabilize enough without investing four thousand bucks there. That we could use on the larger project. So. For for context, the Fair Street repairs were deemed ineligible for FEMA support. Because they are eligible for disaster relief from the Federal Highway Administration. So we have reformatted. All of what we prepared for FEMA and resubmitted it to. Federal Highway Administration goes through this regional office for the DOT. And we're hoping to have clearer direction on that soon. We're sort of in a holding pattern with that. In the meantime. Han has been making plans. To present to us on the twenty-second as of Monday, and he should make some modifications to address. This further fallout from that, from that culvert. Which it will do and bring into us. So what Bugsy is asking for is. If he needs to take measures to. Redirect the water. To get us through to the larger repair. If this becomes his only option, he was looking for an approval. And that is how I understand it as well, to be the last option that's available to him, only because we're not meeting again in session until the twenty-second of May. So he's without flexibility for approval. Thoughts?
Is there? Is there thinking that he would, if. If we would, that he would be doing construction, putting in that pipe?
I didn't finish answering your question. That's why you don't know the answer to that. Okay, sorry. I got distracted talking about the lady brush. So. The proposal, you will see more, but the proposal from Han is to replace, replace the culvert that's there. Bring the water on the hillside or on the.
On the hillside.
Road, on the hillside. Separate properly and to turn to current code, the water and the wastewater lines that run through that culvert. And so so restructuring and bringing up to code. And then filling in that gully so that we don't have that pit anymore. Getting it to getting it to a reasonable depth, separating the two types of line, filling in the gully and then opening. That easement to a mowed surface. It's for for reasons that I cannot explain to you, at some point, the village stopped maintaining that easement. And for years, previous administrations have maintained that it was private infrastructure and not the village's to fix. We in fact. Have an easement that makes us responsible for that slope and we have not taken care of it. That's just the truth. So the the Han proposal, which they will talk you through. In a in a more elegant way than I can is to replace that. Replace that culvert, separate the lines, fill in the hole, fill in the fill in the ditch. It's a big ditch. I mean, like I can, I stood in it and it's over my head. And. Create a mode surface.
Okay, but so then.
So the this line, sorry, going back to that, this line would. Connect to, and Jeff, if you feel that you can better explain than I can, feel free to interrupt me. This flexible line would. Connect to what remains of the top end of the pipe. To convey the storm water. So the water line and the and the wastewater line are intact. They're underground. The culvert around them has collapsed. The. Flexible line would connect to what remains at the top end of the culvert. And the layout over the surface down to Fair Street. So it would be surface carrying. Directing the storm water rather than going down into the culvert and then in all the different directions that the storms have cut. In that failed culvert. In a single line to Fair Street. Does that accurately come to come close to what we talked about on site the other day? Okay.
I think it's a, you know, if it if it needs to be done, there is no choice and it's a last ditch effort and Bugsy's waiting on us, then I I think we can approve it for that purpose.
Are you making a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the request for the corrugated pipe.
I should ask first, any further discussion?
Fifteen inch diameter is sufficient for that?
For what? For what is? I'm not an engineer. I can't answer that question.
A better question should have been like has Han reviewed this concept and is okay with it? I think my my concern was just like a little bit of kind of going apart from our overall plan with Han, but if Han has said that this is.
Will Han was on site with us. It's if we had to redirect that water. This is an option until we get to the larger. There's no elegant solution to that without doing, doing the whole project. This is, go ahead.
So this would be a temporary measure if. Other options fail.
Correct.
Okay.
So Eliza has made a motion.
Can you say it again?
I guess I. I want to hear the motion that it that it says that it is clear that this is the last.
I make a. Like a literal last ditch, right? I mean.
The the corrugated pipe requested by the highway department, the. Roadways and facilities department as they're. In the case that they absolutely need it and there are no other alternatives and it needs to be done.
Thank you. A second.
Okay, all in favor? Hi. For being patient with my inelegant description, I'm doing my best with what.
Engineers.
So anyway, we'll hear more from Han and he can help you understand how it fits into the larger project when he comes in on the twenty-second. My other glasses. Couple other quick things that I had for you regarding. FEMA, some good news is that the reimbursement for the damaged fence at the wastewater treatment plant has been obligated to the village, so it's on its way. Air submission for reimbursement of emergency measures, you know, clearing debris, all of that stuff. That's in the final review with dishes and FEMA. We expect that to be obligated soon. The culverts at Fish Street, Fish Gill and Mountain and one thirty-eight Main have been stabilized until the mitigation work can proceed. FEMA acknowledges that we need to address Fair Street first for public safety. The visitor center in kind repairs where the culvert blew out there in July. Has been reviewed and mitigation reimbursement is pending. They've divided into two pieces, repair and mitigation. So we're waiting to get the mitigation. Okay. And then that should be obligated. And I'm continuing to work with Metro North related to the ceiling in the tunnel. There still remains question of whether some responsibility for mitigation. For that. Prepare lies with that agency. We don't want the village to have to put in 25% of something we don't have to pay. So I'm working on that still. It's taking a while. It's just a big bureaucracy. So that's that's all that I have. I mean, way to finish on a happy note, like mayor sunshine here.
We have a good.
Fair, well, yes, well, that's, is are we good on, are we good on Fair Street?
Yeah.
Stuff? Okay. Go ahead. What were you going to say?
Well, no, I mean, I think the next agenda item is a.
Yes. Take it.
Planning. So a lot of the work that we've been doing is disaster response and recovery and this is. We are taking steps to be proactive and think politically about our flood. Planning and infrastructure resilience and do it with a. Aggressive green lens. So what you have before you is a proposal from Fessen O'Neill, which is a very well respected. Engineering and design firm that specializes in climate adaptation and green and gray infrastructure planning. And so what they are proposing is first a flood resilience reconnaissance study. They'll do a site visit. They'll have meetings with us and and Han. They will produce a memo that compiles kind of the existing. Knowledge that we have about floods and impacts in the area in our in both Backbrook and Boundary. Also working with Nelsonville. And put together some basic recommendations and then approximate costs for this hydraulic and hydrologic study that we've been talking about, H and H study. And what I'm really excited about for this is that the timing we move quickly is that it will set us up to write a write competitive grants in the summer. For funding to cover the H and H study. So we know that we can't do this without grants.
But it gives us enough of what we need to qual- to qualify for some of those.
Exactly. Yeah.
It's kind of first stage of.
Yeah. So we are trying to get this going quickly. And it is a professional service. Um, and it is a professional service. So you'll also see a memo that justifies uh, why we didn't seek three bids. Um, they're a very specialized um, uh, firm. Will just provide the justification and um, the mayor and I met with them and are very impressed with their skill set. So um, unless there are questions, are there questions about this?
Well, it's much needed and I think this is the only way for us to move forward. The biggest threat to our village right now is storm water. And if we don't have some kind of plan going forward and we can't come up with it. Then we need this. So I appreciate that you're preparing it.
Yeah, great. Um, so I would make a motion to uh, one. Uh, to approve the quote for the flood resilience reconnaissance study from Fessin O'Neill. Circle, all in favor? Okay, Laura, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, well, there is no one who loves an Irish goodbye better than a guy named Vidakovic. So um, Jeff has put off his retirement for quite some time while we look for the right candidate. Um, he has given the village more than probably the village ever deserved in terms of time, energy and brain work. We are grateful for it, but he has reached his max. We are, the board is in the process of meeting uh, of interviewing candidates. We have, we have a good slate of candidates and hope to be making an announcement shortly. Um, but for the moment. Um, I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation upon retirement for Jeff Vidakovic.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me keep on my.
I just, yeah.
And Jeff, he'll, he'll look forward to seeing you and will be quite jealous seeing you sitting on the porch. Drinking beverages and listening to music. He's not. But when, when Kelly writes the minutes, she can, when she listens to it, to write the minutes, she can play it again. Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for extending your time to get us to the next, the next great thing. Okay, approval of minutes, four twenty four. Any needed modifications?
No, here.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty fourth. We can all vote on this. We were all present.
Present.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bills, just got the bill.
I make a motion to approve batch number seven three fifty three for the amount of a hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred seventeen. Dollars and five cents.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you again Kathleen for taking my role and signing all of that yet again.
Well, I caught you up, but I don't know how much longer I'm gonna initial things. Okay, I make motion return. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night all. Thank you.